Good afternoon. So today Rusty Mao, fellow budget analyst, and myself will be guiding you through information as a continuation of our fiscal year 2022 budget development process. All right, it was just working, Max. So just a quick look at our fiscal year 2022 budget timeline. Most recently in March, we reviewed with you first pass expenditures. That included a review of the new personnel-related requests, significant drivers for salary, operating and program support of the general fund. We additionally reviewed the recommended fiscal year 2022 capital and information technology requests. Our next session together is calendared for May the 11th with our hearing from our education partners, their 2022 budget requests, and then additionally with fire districts around any of their tax rate requests. And I know, so with Chairman Newman not here, my question was, is I know that Chairman Newman had asked in the last meeting about the possibility, or what would it look like if we did the public hearing and the budget adoption on the same day? What I'll just communicate about that is that I had discussed with Michael Frew. We just wanted to make sure that from the dates perspective, that we would be in compliance with statutory requirements. If you were to request or want to hold public hearing and adoption on June the 1st, we would meet those statutory requirements, and it would just require that the meeting would be properly noticed to include both of those items. So I don't know if that's anything that you all want to take up for discussion or decision, or we can certainly wait for that for later. I'll wait for Chairman Newman to... Great, so we had just gotten started, so we'll continue. So for the agenda today, we will begin with a review of our current year projections for the general fund expenditures and revenues. So essentially, where do we project where we believe we might end the year? We will then revisit some topics from our prior March session where you had some questions for us to bring back additional information or answers. Some of the topics that I will cover in our presentation, some of the topics I'll cover today, but there are a few follow-ups that we have provided in handouts that are in your packet. And so if you don't mind, if I can just take a few minutes to kind of walk you through your packet so that you know what's included in it. The first handout is a list of the positions that were requested versus those that are being recommended. The second handout is a list of, questions were posed for some further details specific to solid waste operations and capital. So solid waste director Dane Peterson has provided some answers to those, and we've included that in a memo format. We additionally have included the information from recreation services for the dog park and a schematic as to its location. Matt Cable with our transportation division has provided some additional details for mountain mobility funding requests to support the continued paratransit services to our older adults. Another item that we've included in your packet, we talked and committed that we would bring back to you, the education special projects funding. So we reviewed that proposed process that we had reviewed with the schools. Both Asheville City and Buncombe County schools provided us back with a list. We had asked that they prioritize that list, which they have provided. In your packet is that complete list. We, in the multi-year format, looked to try to take that list, establish what might be an annual recommended amount, put it into a five-year plan. So that list is in your packet. Our current proposed amount that's included in the expenditures that we will discuss today is $300,000. So just know that that's the current recommended amount based on the list that we receive from the schools, and then obviously that's to your discretion to move that up or down. So Chairman Newman's question was, are we going to review that in more detail today? We had, we do not have that included as part of our presentation, but certainly can answer any questions, or if it may be more appropriate that we come back with it during May the 11th, which is the meeting with our education partners.
Well, maybe just if it's not elsewhere on the agenda today, thank you for doing this. I think this really kind of helps inform thinking around this. My only observation, and it's not that, you know, we want to obviously look at this in more detail. It is, if you look at the last several years where, you know, from time to time, we've kind of on an ad hoc basis kind of made decisions to add more funding, this is quite a bit more than what we have been doing, right? So I think if the idea was, hey, let's look at what we've been doing, you know, and then, but then kind of create a different process for doing something similar, I think this is a better process. But it's also just, it's just an observation that is quite a bit more than what we have been, just periodically on standalone decisions-making, so.
But you can decide, you can decide on an amount, and then we can work with that amount. We just looked at what they gave us in total and decided on a amount, but you can decide on any amount you want to spend, and then we can fit the projects to match that amount.
Is there any way of kind of knowing again, kind of at a high level, you know, with all the list of projects that are here, like if we didn't do something like this new process, does it mean none of these projects would happen, or do the schools have other potential funding sources that they could be using to kind of, you know, plug away at these kinds of projects over time?
I mean, based on the conversation we've had with the schools, is that these types of projects have a tendency to fall to the lower priority for other funding revenue streams because of other urgent or immediate needs. The chiller went out, those kinds of capital needs. So our, my understanding, and I'm going to look at Sam to see if he has anything else to weigh in on, but is, was that these tend to fall lower in priority and?
So these are, these are all capital projects that could be eligible for other capital fund sources that they have through lottery funds and things like that. But again, they're just saying that, look, unless the county does a process like this, a lot of projects like this, real estate probably won't get funded.
I would imagine that the majority of these could be covered by the Article 4042, which is the pass-through, which is generally what they fund for the items that don't meet the $100,000 threshold criteria for the school capital fund commission for Article 39.
But they'd be lower priorities, and sometimes they can be fundraised, and like BAND and different auxiliary boards can do that funding for them as well.
Okay, thanks for the additional info.
Sure. So the last handout that's included in your packet on the right side of your folder is the proposed fee schedule changes, which we did provide additionally to you in advance. So a summary PowerPoint slide, and then provided to you and posted online, is the full fee schedule document for the public to be able to review. What I'd like to do is if you all did have any questions related to the proposed fee schedule changes, that we visit that at the end of our conversation today. We'd be happy to try to answer those questions, and we have asked that there's department directors who are available, that if, if it's something that you all wanted to, you know, answer us to today, we could do that. I will then turn the presentation over to Rusty Mao after I go through the rest of the, my beginning of the agenda, who you heard from in December during our budget retreat. Rusty will provide a brief review of the concepts of the one-time versus recurring, and in the categories for foundational and strategic plan priorities, so a revisit of those concepts. And then he will additionally review with you the fiscal year 2022 revenue neutral tax rate, and then fiscal year 2022 projected revenues. So we'll begin with our fiscal year 21 year-end projections. The current fiscal year 21 amended budget totals $347.2 million in expenditures. It is balanced with $332 million in revenues and an appropriation of fund balance of $15.1 Beginning with revenue projections, we are projecting $337.6 million in revenues. This is 101.7% of the budgeted revenues, and I'm going to review some details about what drives that over the 100% of the budget. So the revenues that are realized over the budgeted amounts are attributable to a projection of $4.9 million, more in sales tax revenue. Again, we all remember, we were in the midst of the pandemic trying to project those particular revenues, and I think they definitely have come as a surprise to many of us in terms of the sales tax. We received a one-time payment to the county for something that's referred to as Medicaid Hold Harmless in the amount of $1.3 million. What that means is that there's a statute that provides that counties are to be held harmless from the exchange of a portion of the local sales and use tax for the state's agreement, previous agreement, to assume the responsibility for the non-administrative costs of Medicaid. So there was a, it was related to Article 44. So there was a repealing of the Article 44, and so the commitment from the state was to hold counties harmless. We have not received that particular revenue in the last five fiscal years. So we received it this year, and the amount for that one time is $1.3 million. We additionally estimate $5.4 million in ad valorem. This difference comes from the budget at a 99% collection rate as opposed to anticipating a 99.5% collection rate. We've had additional growth in valuation as it results from registered motor vehicles as well, and some real and business property over the fiscal year 21 budget estimate. For the other sources of revenues, so in net exchange of other revenues, we anticipate about a $6.1 million less revenue, and I'm going to go through those. So in conjunction with finance, we were able to purchase vehicles for the fiscal year 21 replacement plan as Pago instead of debt financing. So that's $1.5 million in debt proceeds that we would, we will not receive because we essentially paid that with Pago just based on the revenue trends. There's a $1.5 million budgeted transfer in the budget plan from the Internal Health and Dental Fund that we don't anticipate needing as revenue for the general fund. Health and Human Services as a whole is under the revenue budget by $1.7 million. Again, those are revenues that if the expenditure dollars don't occur, there's a large portion of those revenues that we don't receive. And then sales and services is down $1.6 million, with $1.2 million of that being detention center revenues. So the federal prisoner revenues, we expect to be under $1.2 million this year. And then there was $200,000 we expect to be under budget for emergency services and public health, $200,000. So that's the makeup of the remaining of the under budget we anticipate. Any questions?
And so the federal detention center revenue numbers lower, why did that end at lower?
Housing less federal prisoners.
Right, so but why was that? I guess this is what it meant. Was that, was that expected, or?
It was not expect-
Why is it that fewer folks were staying here rather than whatever, whatever they did do?
We believe it was the impact of COVID and not transferring as many prisoners. There was no prisoner transport for several months during the fifth last year, so we believe that revenue decrease is coming from COVID impacts.
So the federal agencies were sort of doing the same thing, the state and the local, everyone was trying to do to kind of get more folks out of detention facilities.
Correct.
Okay, that makes sense, great.
So moving on to expenditures, the general fund expenditures are budgeted at $347.2 million with an expected year-end estimate of $334.1 million, which is 96.2% of our budget expected to be spent. $1.1 million of salary and benefit expenditures have been able to be covered by our federal cares money. The accounting that happens there is we have to move those expenses from the general fund to the actual grants fund where that money exists. So those expenditures reflect as lower in the salary and benefits budget of the general fund. We additionally, there were some elections expenditures that we would have otherwise incurred, but they were able to be covered in the general fund by some federal cares money and then the Help America Vote Act funding. Other areas of operations and program support anticipate underspending. So that's the review of expenditures. Putting those together with 96.2% of expenditures and 101.7% of revenues, the current outlook projects approximate $3.5 million contribution to fund balance. That's pretty straightforward. I'm happy to take any questions on this.
I guess just maybe again, just really high, high level, but so there's lots of really good news in here in a way, right? Like expenses are lower, revenues higher, that's kind of what you would hope to hear, right? So I guess just, and I know it's been a crazy year, right? So different, but just in terms of sort of landing at the, towards the end of the year where we are, does any of this kind of come as a surprise? I'm sure these trends have been kind of developing over a period of time, but so while it's good news that we're in a better-than-forecasted financial position, the numbers are also just, you know, they're off by kind of so much, does anything kind of surprise you, or anything about kind of where we're, we're landing in a way?
I can start, or you? So I, I mean, I definitely go back to the sales tax. I think, I'm going to look at Rusty, who's our staff economist. I think sales tax definitely was a surprise to us all. I think that we additionally really couldn't anticipate or didn't expect quite the permits and inspections, the building kind of continuation and boom. I think those are a couple of areas. I don't know that there's any particular surprises around the expenditure patterns for us.
We typically spend about 96% to 98% of our budget, so we were on track on spending. The Cures funding coming as quickly as it did and lasting as long as it did was a surprise as well. Typically with this, you have to apply to FEMA to get your monies back, but with the release of Cures money, we didn't have to go through that FEMA, spend the money, then wait for reimbursement. So that was a surprise as well, along with the economy. We had no idea that it would bounce back this quickly and this, this robust. So we did, we did not expect this much revenue coming in.
Great.
I was looking at that, the airport budget that Lamar sent us last night, had passenger traffic historical numbers, and 2020 was down from 2019, but substantially higher than 2018 last year, which is surprising to me.
And I'll tell you, what's not a surprise to me is when, you know, you look at the staff and employees we have, it didn't surprise me because we have the good people, and we're getting even better, in place from when I came onboard four years ago. So, you know, I want to commend the staff and employees. I think we've got to give them credit for what, what was a tough year, working at home, you know, changing around, some working where they normally wouldn't work, you know, during the pandemic to help out with the shots and all. But I, we can't forget, you know, the employees and staff for what you did, and thank you. I think we need as commissioners to thank you for a job well done, and I think these numbers are a tribute to that, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I'm going to move to our next agenda item. So we committed to bring back to you information related to any expenditure changes that would have happened since our first pass review for the budget, as well as follow-up on some of those items that you asked about last meeting. So I'd like to begin with expenditure changes since our first pass, and I'm just going to go through the list. So included in this next iteration of the budget has been the $851,000 increase to the early childhood education. That brings our total investment to $3.75 million. It also includes the increased request for 606, a net increase of $606,000 for conservation easements, so establishes $750,000 for easements, then with the addition of one new position to support that extra transactional work, and then the one associated reclass around that organizational structure. We've included the $300,000 placeholder again for establishing the education funding, and again, that one, that one is open to revisit. The mountain mobility amount of $256,000 to offset the North Carolina Department of Transportation funding loss. The total investment proposed for mountain mobility's funding is $1.64 million. It includes the $255,000 placeholder to fund one cohort pilot program in an effort to address our achievement gap. We have included $220,000 for dashboard and body cameras. It's a finalized cost estimate for a phased-in approach for dash and body cams in association with the rollout of like the fleet replacement. So as we anticipate to do replacement for the sheriff vehicle fleet, we would pair that with a phased-in approach for dashboard and body cameras. This new iteration of the budget includes an equity officer position. We worked with IT to make some adjustments for some finalized, finalized cost estimates for the IT governance projects, which yielded about $125,000 reduction for the general fund. And then since our last time with you, really went back and worked with departments to evaluate baseline budgeted budgets, I've been able to work and reduce the departmental budgets primarily to refine their operating budget. So we yielded a decrease of about $945,000 in expenditures. And then for lap salary reduction, we've worked over the last few fiscal years to really try to hone in on what is a lap salary amount. We continue to have some of the early retirement incentive costs that we cover in the budget, the annual leave cash conversion, and then annual leave payouts. And so we've, we feel that we've gotten a better handle on understanding like each subsequent year, about what costs we incur related to that, and are projecting it. So we start with a 100% budget for positions, and then we went back and refined that and believe that we can reduce the current salary and benefits budgets by $2.3 million as a, as a, an estimate to be able to absorb with lap for lap salary. So we've reduced salary and benefit budgets by $2.3 million. So after all of those adjustments to expenditures, we're looking at a net decrease totaling $715,000. Any questions around those? Hearing none.
Chairman? On the agenda, is it exciting to be a different equity officer? I'm wondering if you could show a little bit of context, and that is the work that the heavy burden lifted of, you know, the ensuring equity is part of every part of the country's work, it makes a lot of sense intuitively, but it would just be great to hear sort of the thought on that.
You're asking about the equity officer. Initially, when we started to put together the budget, staff, the equity work group actually requested two positions for equity, and I said not at this time because we were now rolling out the equity action plan. But since then, we started the equity action plan, we've had about six meetings by now, and the first ones that I listened into, the community, the committee, the community was asking, we want to see you put your money where your mouth is. We really want to understand how you're going to get implementation to be done. And my thought at first was going to be a slow implementation, but I don't think I have that runway to do that. So this position would really help to take the equity action plan and put it into implementation. Right now, the work group has done the legwork. We have this embedded in all of departments, all the departments know what we're doing. So now this person would help to lead that effort into implementation and help to continue engaging the community to make sure that we can have at the end of the year some results around what we've been talking about.
I'll put my mic on now. Thank you very much. That's really helpful, and I'm excited to see that included here. It feels like the appropriate way to ensure that this work really has the leadership it needs, and we'll be excited to hear more details about how that position will be structured in terms of the leadership team and making sure it's really integrated into the sort of full work of county departments. I'm sure you all are already thinking about that part of it.
And we have, and I have a unique opportunity right now because I would have a vacancy in my department, started May 7th, I believe, I would have a vacancy. So the thought, what we're working on now is to take that vacancy and to restructure it so that that position is not going to be the NDL position, so take that existing position at Admiral D.D. Stillett, where the complaints, the appeal process would go through, that my current position in-house. But the vacancy happens, I believe, May 7th is when my employee would leave. So when that employee leaves, the new hire would have those duties already, so we're recruiting, we'll start recruiting, if not tomorrow, by Monday, to fill that vacancy with those added duties.
Great.
So will that position be the equity officer? Oh, okay, so we're talking about two different, okay, understood.
The NDL will be an existing position.
Okay, understood.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? So a question was asked about the comparison of the unrestricted revenue growth rate versus the actual growth rate for K through 12 schools. The first year the education formula was proposed was fiscal year 19. And so if we start with the comparison growth from fiscal year 18 to fiscal year 19, the unrestricted revenue growth rate estimate was 2.28%. Moving on to compare to fiscal year 20 at 4.24%, fiscal year 21 at 1%, and then for the projected for fiscal year 2022, 5.63%. If we overlay the actual growth for fiscal year 19, percent growth was 4.3%. Pardon? Yes, yes. So if you look at the actual compared to the, for 19, 4.3 was the actual, 2.28 was the unrestricted revenue projection. For fiscal year 20, it was 4.24, we stayed flat to the 4.24. In fiscal year 21, the actual growth was 2.19% compared to 1% projected. And then in the current pass of the budget, the 3% is what's proposed for actual, and 5.63 is the calculated unrestricted. For a total funding amount through fiscal year 21, using the unrestricted revenue growth rate, it would have been 5.7 million, but the actual up through 21 was 8.2. So if we used what the restricted, the unrestricted revenue growth rate would yield, that was 5.7, but the actual at 8.2. If you carry that through the fiscal year 2022 year, if you use the unrestricted revenue growth rate, it's 10.2 million. If you use the 3%, we're at 10.7. So over that five-year period, if you use the unrestricted revenue growth rate, the total growth we would give the schools would have been 10.2 million. Actual that we would provide to them, if you stick with the 3.0% that's currently in this pass of the budget, it's 10.7 million. Does that make sense?
Can I restate it back?
Sure.
See if I got it right. So, so looking back the last several years, in each of those years, we have funded the school's budget above the growth except for FY '20 where it was actually, that was the one year where we're like, we're actually going to try to stick to that concept this year, right?
Yes.
So the other years has been greater. And the, the budget plays out as contemplated on this page, in this, in this forward-looking year, we would actually do under because we're expecting a lot of revenue growth for all these different reasons. And so in a way, we'd almost kind of true it up over that several-year outlook.
You're still slightly a little higher, so you're at 10.
A little bit above, but it would, it would kind of even out in the years, in the last several years where we've been doing more.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Other questions on this? And so we look back to FY '18, we haven't looked back prior, in the, in the prior years before we adopted the policy.
We certainly can. My recollection is, is that there was, there was significant year-over-year growth- We certainly can. My recollection is, is that there was, there was significant year-over-year growth, even in that five-year period prior. I do recall looking at that in probably a much greater detail in our fiscal year 19 term, but.
You know, I, I don't want to put people through a big hurdle. I think it actually would be useful to look at it. I mean, this is such a big part of our budget that this kind of snapshot, I think is interesting. I think if you, if you added three or four years before it, I think it would also tell like a more full story. So if it's, if it's possible to bring that forward as part of our discussions, I think that would be useful to look at.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Would be.
All right, great.
I don't know, maybe, maybe three, three years or so before these, so we kind of get like a, okay, you know, over the last seven or eight years, how has, has our counties grown and our budgets grown? How have the schools' budgets done during that period?
Okay.
Great.
So in our last session, you inquired about the full year costs for the Safety and Justice Challenge. So for five, five months of funding in '22, it's for one full-time and two part-time positions totaling $58,724. The full fiscal year impact for fiscal year '23 is $116,516. So similarly, for the Community Paramedicine Grant, for the four full-time positions for six months in fiscal year 2022, it's roughly $250,000. And then a fiscal year 2023 impact of $430,837. That's just a follow-up on those two particular grants. So one additional question arose around the Environmental Health Specialist, specifically around, a question around fees for the onsite septic and wastewater. We started and took a look at the revenue trends. So to review trends for revenues generated by Environmental Health Onsite and Wastewater and taking a look at the last three fiscal years, for many services that the county provides, there is a county share in the cost of operations. And this is the same for Environmental Health's Onsite and Wastewater. For fiscal year 19, the revenue generated share of operations was 46.6%. Fiscal year 20 actual was 42.7%. The fiscal year 21 budget estimate is 42.1%, although revenues are likely to be higher, resulting in a lower county share in fiscal year 21. And with the new positions, position cost included in the fiscal year 2022, the revenue generated share is estimated to be 41.4%. So there's a slight trend downward in the percent share of the revenues generated. So a review of fees, so our, in our Environmental Health and Health and Human Services Finance Group worked to conduct a review of fees in some peer counties. This included Henderson for close proximity, New Hanover, Union and Forsyth for relative population comparison. And the comparison concludes that our fees are generally in alignment. There were some that were a slight, little higher, a little lower, but overall generally in alignment. And we would not recommend changing fees at this time. If the position costs were to be fully covered by an increase in revenues, the fees would need to increase across the board by approximately 20%. Staff's perspective is that this would be a significant change in impact to implement in a one-year timeframe. If the board's desires to direct staff towards setting fees that covers and establish or recommended like percent share, we could take that back and evaluate. So just wanted to give you that historical outlook that we've not ever been a 100% covering, covering service in the Environmental Health Onsite and Septic and Wastewater.
My statement was, we were in the past closer to 50% split. So if the policy conversation is around getting back to that, that's a smaller percentage you will have to make up than try to do a full cost recovery of this position. So I just want to put that on the table in case you guys wanted to talk through. If you want us to look at leaving it as is or trying to get to a 50-50 split, closer to the 46.6 that it used to be.
I have a couple, a couple of questions about it. So in terms of this, this position or this, this kind of role in the organization, is this a position that is, spends all their time just on like processing permits for new construction? Or do they do a bunch of other things as part of their job too?
I would say that this is an inspector, but I don't know and I'm looking around.
So there's, there are directors who are available on Zoom. Max, do you know, do you know if Jessica Silvers or Stony or Stacy are available?
Stacy, probably not.
Jet, oh, we can't.
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
I assume it's all, it's new construction and, you know, new repair areas or.
Yes.
That's renovation related to existing septic.
Septic and well.
Yeah, so it's like, it's not all new construction.
Right, something's old and it's big stuff, then you need to get inspected.
So Jessica is available. Jessica, can you hear us?
Absolutely. You all hit the nail on the head. It's everything. It's from, everything from new construction for private home septic systems to wells, to complaints about failing systems or to repairs for failing systems. All of that is included in the Onsite Wastewater section in addition to water sample.
That's really cool. What percentage of the time, if it's possible, just ballpark, is spent like on permitting or, you know, reviews of new construction activity?
I can pull some numbers and, and bring that back to you all. I can tell you that now we are, because of everyone being home due to COVID, we have seen an, an increase in repair applications. We are about 200 applications ahead of where we were last year with repairs prior, I'm sorry, where we were in 2019 prior to COVID. So that tells us that people are using more water and taxing their systems more than they usually would. And repair systems are generally, are really challenging to, to evaluate. According to the state, our staff can evaluate one repair application per day in addition to one new application for a new housing site, just to give you some perspective of time. And after the initial visit, inspectors may request pits on lots to get a deeper, to have a deeper dive into the soil, literally and figuratively, and to give a better picture of how well a system would work. And incidentally, another challenging component to it that adds to the timeframe is the fact that our lots in Buncombe County are getting smaller and smaller. And that brings another layer of challenge to the inspectors for designing the system that will actually work for what the homeowner is interested in building.
Thank you very much. That's very useful to understand. I guess I'll just share, share a couple of thoughts. I mean, it's partly just a kind of a philosophical, you know, you know, question, right? Like, should this be cost recovery or should taxpayers subsidize it in some way? I guess just, and we haven't, I don't think we've had like a real detailed discussion about this particular point, but just as a kind of a philosophical matter, I guess in a way for things that are like new construction, new permits, things like that, it seems like, I mean, I'm not for, you know, dramatically changing stuff all at one time, but just in principle, it seems like it would be nice for those things to pay for themselves, right? Folks are coming in, they want to build a project, you know, make some money doing it, you know? It seems like that's, that's all great, but, you know, why shouldn't we have those costs for the service, you know, pay for themselves? And not, not try to make money off of it, but, but simply reflect the cost of service. On some of these issues around folks who are repairing systems and doing things like that, you know, maybe that's in a way a little different, like we don't want to do anything if there's systems that aren't working well. We don't want to discourage people from coming in and taking steps to get them fixed, right? So maybe those are places where, you know, hey, let's, let's make that really affordable so that people do not, you know, get discouraged from coming in. So I don't know, those are just a few of my thoughts. That's so just for going forward, if we look at maybe adjusting the rates over time so that the new construction permits, we try to get them to be more self-financing, I think that would be a good goal. But the other parts, I'm pretty comfortable with, you know, giving a, a really affordable approach to them because there's a lot of public benefits from them being fully utilized. So those are just one person's thoughts. Any other comments or questions on this at this time?
Well, one initial reaction I had was, was, you know, what are the growth rates of those other counties that you mentioned? One of the initial reactions I had was, what, what are the kind of like the growth rates? The amount of development and construction happening in some of those other counties that I know are more equal in population? I guess Union County is one of the fastest-growing places in the country, isn't it? And we're, we're in line with them?
Yes.
Okay. Is there, I'm trying to see in this, are the fees in this, in this document?
No, we can, we can look to provide you that information.
All the other fees, because.
Oh, that, well, he's, he's talking, are you talking about the fee comparison?
Yeah, well, the specific fees for Environmental Health, Septic and Wastewater.
They are in there.
They are in here? Okay.
So ours are actually published in the. Published in the.
Okay. Okay. What I'm, what I'm getting at is, is there a flat fee for, a different flat fee for new construction versus a different flat fee for, for repair?
There are different fees for repair versus construction. And Jessica's still, yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask you something? Can I just use this position, then if we have our whole planning department, you know, around new construction or, you know, rehab somewhere, what's, is there a general kind of philosophical position that county's taken towards kind of like cost recovery when it comes to new construction more generally for kind of the sweep of permits and reviews that new construction projects need to go through to get permits from the county?
I don't have a philosophical where we say that we're going to have new construction fully recover costs because then we'll have to do a cost analysis to what does it truly cost to do that work? And that work, that level of detail has not been done. Because it's the same position that was going to serve both new construction as well as maintaining all septic. So we have not said, what percentage of your time goes to new construction? We have not done that level of detail.
This position's actually in health, right? Whereas there's the planning department with all the, like, building permits and building, you know, building stuff like that. Well, anyway, I mean, I mean, I know that's all part of the, I mean, it's part of the different overall schedule stuff, but. So the, so the permitting department doesn't necessarily seek cost recovery, it just sort of adjusts these over time?
There's.
Based on, how are those decisions made based on reviewing other counties or just?
I, I would venture to say that.
Yep.
Is Matt Stone available?
I don't know if Matt's available or not, but I'll just add that, yes, we do try to be competitive with surrounding counties when it comes to our fee schedule. And I will add that I'm not sure how many years that we've had more revenues than expenditures in building inspections, but that is the case in building inspections. That is not the case in planning or environmental health, so.
There's one more element to permits and inspections. There was actually, there's statutory guidance around the use of permit and inspection revenues. And I can't remember civil, if it was like 2016, maybe a little later. But we go through an analysis in conjunction with finance each year where, where we need to evaluate that permits and instructions, permits and inspections revenue is only used to, to, to do the service, permits and inspections. So it's a restricted revenue source. So, and if there are rollovers, so if you generated more revenues and expenditures in a given year, we have to account for that and continue to have a rolling accounting. Pardon?
I mean, we're way, way far from that right now. We're, we're.
That's environmental health.
Not the permit when you want a house, a house permit. The construction permit. Right.
Building permit.
So is the idea we're much closer to like maybe paying for itself in that part of the permitting?
We are covering, we are very, we are 100% self-covering in permits and inspections.
But not in the planning function, the actual review, planner review side or the environmental health side?
So I have one more slide on this topic. So based on the information we've talked about today, we are requesting to be able to move forward, keep that position in. But if I recall, there was some discussion around the current kind of time, you know, time to actually get to working through the permitting process. And so I wanted to propose to you around two options so that we work towards approving the position in the current fiscal year, that we would bring that back as a request at the May 4th meeting. Or we can continue the course and request the position be approved with the fiscal year 2022 budget. So there's your two options and, Avril.
And what that would mean is if, if we start on May 4th, we can actually advertise and have someone hired and possibly get some training so they can help now with the workload. Or we can wait till July, then advertise, which means a person comes on probably two months later in September. And with the level of concern we're seeing in our construction community, you can make a decision today to tell us to bring this back on May 4th and then we can start advertising. Or we can wait and have it as part of the budget in July.
But from everything I've read, it seems that we need a position now, right?
Agree. If this is, especially because this is holding up the building permitting process because they have to get this part and the septic permitted to begin that whole process. So from what I'm hearing, that is, has been delayed.
I would support moving it to May 4th.
And the second question that we will bring back on May 4th for regular agenda and then we will start posting the position. Did you want us to take a look at any of the new construction fees to help recover some of this cost? Move it closer to a 50-50 split or leave them as is? Those will start probably in July versus now.
That is, how does that impact especially some of those who have more affordability issues? Because the builders are going to pass this on to the homeowners. So I understand what you're saying, we need to look at it, but I do have concerns around that with affordability, with how it impacts some of those, you know, who have some of those issues in the community as well. And I, and I'm guessing you cannot probably differentiate as far as like the cost of projects or that type of thing. I'm guessing you have to have that just across the board, whatever fees you have.
We, we have given fee rebates for affordable housing in the past. We were talking about that at the committee not too long ago, I think. So that is, I think when they get the permits, they have to pay 100%. But then I think we can have a policy to, like in essence, rebate them back if you want to. But we've, I think, am I wrong about that, Sybil? Isn't that what we have done in the past? Although I think we kind of decided ultimately it may not be that effective because it's pretty administratively like.
Yes.
If you, you know, if you've already paid it upfront, does it, does it really like move the needle? Is anybody like, oh, I'm going to build an affordable housing project instead of a market rate housing project because I get a fee rebate? Like people just, it doesn't, like, like, a lot of our policies are very effective. I think we kind of determined that that maybe wasn't that effective. And so while we have been doing the rebates, I think the current thinking is that we, we probably will not continue it in the future because it just didn't, it's not that much money, it doesn't drive the decision-making. Tell me if anything I got was, was way off as much as possible.
So the current rebates that we were offering were around 200 to $300 based on that incentive. And it's really just not enough to make or drive that kind of interest in pursuing affordable housing.
Not necessarily with big builders doing affordable housing, but there's just, there's homeowner, people who are building their own home or they're putting in mobile homes. And then these type of fees impact them too, not speaking to the big builders.
Well, you know, living in the city, I need to be educated here. How many septic, new septic tanks, you know, applications do we get a year? Is it that many?
Jessica.
Hello. So we get about 2,500 to 2,700 applications per year. Just to put it in, in perspective, total, well, total. Total, well, total, um, applications.
Thank you. Thanks, Dan. You know, I, I mean, for myself, I'd be open to looking at, you know, better cost recovery on this. I mean, just, just on this one area, you know, we're subsidizing it half million dollars a year. If there was a little bit better cost recovery in these kinds of arenas, I'm not just saying this one specifically, but in growth and planning and development, the whole suite of activities we do there, I mean, it would potentially provide us more resources to invest in targeted ways around really building affordable housing. So, I mean, for myself, I'm open to it. I mean, again, I don't think we need to change stuff so much to shock the system at one time, but over, over a period of time, I'd like to kind of move a bit more in that direction. Any other, just kind of general comments or questions on this, more on this?
I'd be interested in seeing staff sort of bring forward some ideas of what that might look like. I, I sort of can see the strength of both arguments at the theoretical level, but maybe if we could just, yeah, I'd be specifically interested in whether there were some targeted areas where some rate increases might make sense, and then some areas where, where it would make sense to keep rates as, as close to other counties as possible. So I'd like, I'd appreciate information.
You know, I, I agree with Brownie when it comes to the new applications. If we could come closer to breaking even there. Now, I agree when we talk about repairs and all, that's a different animal because we're talking about environmental concerns and health there. But on the new applications, yeah, I agree. If we could just close that gap some on what we're losing, yeah. I'd like to see us looking.
My final thought is just looking at this chart you have, the percent of budget recovered is going down every year, and that's just not a, over 10 years, that's not a great trend, so.
I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna grow a lot over the next 10, 20 years. You know, so, so we need a good process that's business friendly, gets people permits in timely fashion, stuff like that. But I personally, you know, I mean, again, except where we're getting a lot of public benefits to affordable housing and stuff like that, I'd like to see that kind of pay for itself. All right. Well, thanks for thinking this through or getting some, having some discussion. There's more in this slide, in this.
There is. So at this point, I would like to turn the presentation over to Rusty Mao, again, who will revisit the concepts and talk to you through our revenues.
All right. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
All right. So it's, it's been about four months since we've kind of all started this journey together at our budget retreat. We started talking through some concepts at that time. And so I just want to start our conversation today, reintroduce some of those topics that we covered. And that'll really prepare us to look at our FY22 revenue budget, and then a combined financial outlook, similar to what we did at the budget retreat. I will tell you, as we go throughout this section of our, of our work session, we will really kind of look at things as individual slices building up to the whole picture. So we'll go through these concepts, then we'll look at our revenue sources other than property taxes, then we'll talk through some of those things like the revenue neutral actual calculation, as well as our property taxes, and then look at kind of the combined outlook of our, of our overall budget. So the, the first area, we talked about this at our, at the budget retreat, is just how we classify our expenditures, making sure we're, we're isolating trends and characterizing things in the right classification. We really want to look at our, at our, our budget as slices of the pie. So the first, on the, on the left side here is foundational. Now, this is not the foundational focus area in our strategic plan, it's just kind of the same word there, but we look at our foundational recurring. These are our routine annual commitments, something we're going to do every year. So it's the salaries and benefits we pay our staff, it's our operating expenses, it's the money that we provide to our K-12 education partners as well as AB Tech, it's our debt service for our capital projects that we've incurred. The next category is our one-time expenses, our one-time appropriations. So examples here are our capital pay-go projects, so things we pay for in cash, it's our IT software projects, that initial acquisition, it's our vehicles, even though we may purchase vehicles each year, that, that vehicle is a one-time purchase. And then other ad hoc needs, that may be grants, if we receive a grant in a year, a carryforward from a year, or just an unplanned temporary expense. You can imagine in this year, we, we understand that concept. And so then, under our strategic plan priorities, we have our, our, our community expenditures. And these are really annual commitments to a community focus area. You know, it may be kind of the same idea of a one-time payment for an affordable housing project, but that's an ongoing, routine, recurring expense. And we like to look at those specifically because if you look by project or initiative, it's easy to tailor those and tie them directly to the strategic plan, just by nature of the way some of these award structures are, are set up. So then, the next concept we want to talk through is a balanced budget. And so as, as you're well aware, we are required to pass a balanced budget, and what do we mean by that? So according to general statute, it's the, the sum of estimated net revenues and appropriated fund balance is equal to appropriations. Expenditures equal revenues plus appropriated fund balance. But when we look to that, that's not our ultimate goal. Our ultimate goal is structural balance. And so what we mean by that is where our one-time revenues, so our appropriated fund balance or other one-time revenues, would not exceed our one-time expenses, so that we're not relying on a one-time expenditure to cover, or one-time revenue to cover a recurring So the, another concept important, especially in this year, reappraisal year to review, is revenue neutral. And so what is revenue neutral? So listed here, and I'll read it directly, the revenue neutral is the, the rate that is estimated to produce revenue for the next fiscal year, equal to the revenue that would have been produced for the next fiscal year by the current tax rate if no reappraisal had occurred. How much revenue would you have produced next year, similar to this year? The question that you might ask is, well, what about growth? And that's a really important factor in how we calculate revenue neutral. And so this is also outlined in statute, and I'll read it directly here, but the budget officer shall first determine a rate that would produce revenues equal to those produced for the current fiscal year, and then increase the rate by a growth factor equal to the average annual percentage increase in the tax base due to improvement since the last general reappraisal. Emphasis added is mine. But I mention that because we'll walk through that calculation as we get to that section today, and I'll, and I'll walk through what that looks like, as well as what that growth factor is and how that all is, is affected in terms of what drives our FY22 revenue budget. So that is it on our concepts, kind of our foundational educational piece there. I'll pause here for any questions. All right. So like I said, we'll start to walk through our FY22, these are first pass revenues, with a focus on kind of one slice of the pie at a time. We'll, we'll build up to our property tax revenue, our, our revenue neutral calculation, first focusing on those non-property tax revenues. So to do that, I want to start with, like we always do, kind of where we are now. So this is our FY21 amended budget. So in total, our revenues other than property tax revenue make up $119.8 million. That's about one-third of our total revenue budget excluding appropriated fund balance. So when you think of these revenues, think of about a third. Intergovernmental there, listed at 46 million. This is largely pass-through dollars for HHS, Health and Human Services expenditures. You'll see this as high when I show you the comparison for FY21 due to one-time appropriations and budget amendments that have been related to pandemic assistance and, and funding sources. Sales tax you see there is budgeted at $30 million. In a subsequent slide, we will walk through this in detail, and I'll show you our FY21 budget as well as our projections to try to help everyone see that and also look where our FY22 first pass budget takes us. I will just go ahead and reiterate, and we heard this earlier, but just as a reminder, the FY21 budget for sales tax was set in April of last year with revenue data through January for sales tax amid significant uncertainty. So that'll be a theme as I continue to walk through sales tax and some other items. Sales and services listed here at 18 million. That includes ambulance fees, the federal prisoner income, which we touched on a little bit earlier, rental income, tax collection fees, parking fees, and other small revenue streams. Transfers from other funds, that includes $3 million, a recent budget amendment to cover our other post-employment benefits liabilities, transfer from the Health and Dental Fund. So again, when I show you the, the annual comparison, it'll be due to those one-time sources. It also includes the $1.5 million Jennifer mentioned prior as a transfer from the Health Insurance Fund as a one-time revenue that, that won't be needed in FY22. We'll go through that comparison in, in a moment. And then that includes a $5 million transfer from Fund 333 to cover our AB Tech operating expenditures. Other taxes and licenses shown here at 8.1 million. That includes the deed stamp excise tax, which we recently raised with a, with a budget amendment, video programming services, rental car gross receipts, and heavy equipment rental. Permits and fees listed there at 3.9 million, self-explanatory, it's our permits and fees. Other revenue includes our grant revenue that is in Fund 100, so some of those one-time funding sources. It includes investment earnings, sale of assets, and indirect cost recovery. And then bond proceeds represented there, which Jennifer mentioned earlier, was a planned debt financing for our vehicles, but the, the financing was not pursued in consultation with finance and just looking at, at current trends. So that's where we are now. Any questions there? All right. So when we look at our FY22 first pass revenue budget, again, excluding our property taxes, you see the total here is listed at $116.5 million. Excuse me. This is slightly lower than the FY21 amended budget, and I'll walk through a comparison on our next slide. But the largest category here remains intergovernmental, which again is largely that pass-through revenue. Sales tax remains the second largest. Like I said, we'll walk through a detailed slide specifically to sales tax. So let me jump to our comparison, and we'll walk through each element there and, and walk through the changes. So in total, these revenues excluding our property taxes are, for FY22, are down 3.4 million. This is 3.4 million lower than FY22's first pass budget compared to the FY21 amended budget. This is largely driven by a lot of those one-time revenues that we've received in FY21 and appropriated through budget amendments throughout the year. So intergovernmental revenue, for example, falls 2.7 million. That's driven by those one-time appropriations, those budget amendments made primarily for pandemic-related programs and assistance, so that pass-through revenue that's then distributed out to citizens. Sales tax increases by 5.4 million. I'll review this on our next slide, I keep saying that. Sales and services remain flat, that's driven by current trends in these categories and current conditions. Transfers from other funds falls by 4.5 million because it's elevated in FY21. That's the $3 million transfer for the OPEB, other post-employment benefits, that was a March budget amendment, and then that $1.5 million transfer one-time from the Health and Dental Fund. So those two one-time revenue sources aren't, aren't used in, in FY22. Other taxes and licenses shows a $0.2 million increase driven by an increase in budgeted deed stamp excise tax revenue. Permits and fees revenue increases by $0.8 million driven by current trends in our, in our permits and fees. Other revenue falls by 1.1 million. This is driven by a $700,000 reduction in budgeted investment earnings based on current conditions. Additionally, grant revenue is included in this category, and it falls by half a million dollars to 214,000. A lot of that is the elections, HAVA Act, funding. So that was over $600,000 received there to cover some of our elections expenditures. So before I jump into the details on sales tax, any questions here on, on this comparison? All right. So when we review sales tax, we, we typically at the staff level look at, look at this by article, given the details associated with each and the, and the funding mechanism. Just to give you a recap on those, on those three different articles, really four shown, I'll go through each. Article 39 is one penny. 50% of Bunkham's allocation is distributed directly to the School Capital Fund Commission. The remaining 50% listed there as the county share is distributed between taxing districts on the ad valorem distribution method. Article 40 is one half penny. So this article has seen the most growth this year statewide, and, and likely because of some of that buying patterns were interrupted by the pandemic, thereby moving some of that purchasing from urban centers to everywhere across the state. 30% of our allocations distributed to the School Capital Fund, School Capital ADM Fund. The remaining 70%, the county share, is distributed between taxing districts on the per capita distribution method. And then Article 42 there, the, the third listed there is, is also one half penny. 60% of the allocation, of Bunkham's allocation is distributed to the School Capital ADM Fund. The remaining 40%, the county share, is distributed between taxing districts on the ad valorem distribution method. So in total, of those three articles, we, we ended FY2020 with $32.5 million in collections. And I mentioned this before, that the FY21 budget was built on, upon January 2020's sales tax revenue. We built it with April 2020's economic realities, which included significant uncertainty. So what you can see here with our projected, so FY21 amended budget is 30.1 million, our, our projected is 35.0 million. You can see that we're, we're on pace to end approximately $4.9 million of the, above the FY21 budget. And for FY22, we've taken recent trends, which effectively are, are a minimal impact of the pandemic on sales tax revenue, and forecasted that forward into FY22 to reach that 35 and a half million dollar budget. So I'll pause there for questions before I touch on Article 46 real quick.
So it seems really conservative, right? Like, so we're saying like, coming out of this pandemic, I mean, we did better in the pandemic than we thought. So the floor is, you know, higher than maybe we're, we're concerned it was going to be, but you know, like, all the forecasting, like, y'all are about to see the biggest growth in U.S. economy in 50 years, right? Like, that's what everyone's talking about, all of this national recovery funds, the reopenings, that it would basically be flat for the coming year? I mean, doesn't that just seem, seems very conservative? As seen, to some extent it should be, but is it too conservative?
So, we discussed this in my.
Yeah, sure.
We've discussed this internally, and, and what we've committed to is that we would like to, so we will receive our next on the first, May 1st. So we would like to be able to see that one again. We sat in a room, we do monthly financial check-ins with the county manager every month, and we, you know, batted this around for a little while, and this is where we've landed for the current time, based on, yeah, it's 2% growth. And so we definitely want to see the May. We'll continue to take into account material that's distributed around just local, you know, economic forecasts, and do believe that this may be a revenue that we would push between now and budget adoption. So.
Fair enough.
And we are looking at, we are looking at 2020's actual as our benchmark. We, we kind of jumped over 21 and went backwards and says, you know, forget the pandemic, let's look back and see what our growth factor should be. And that's where we're aligned in.
Okay.
So then there at the bottom, in a, a light gray there, is just, to make sure you're aware, Article 46, that's one quarter of a penny. These dollars are not shared with municipalities, they go directly into the AB Tech Capital Projects Fund, and these dollars are governed by NCSL 2020-9. But just wanted to mention those so that you're aware that, that that revenue's there So from here, we've, we've kind of talked through the, the non-property tax revenues. What I want to do is, is pivot us a little bit to this revenue neutral calculation discussion, and again, kind of build up to what that, that property tax revenue looks like for FY22. So first and foremost, in a reappraisal year, the, the budget officer, the county manager is required to, to calculate that, that revenue neutral rate. And so it's that tax rate that's needed to produce the same revenues plus a growth factor. So in our current state, you know, our values for FY2021, pre-reappraisal, property tax rate is 52.9 cents per $100 of assessed value. Our assessed value is $41 billion. And so the calculation for our property tax revenue, when we, when we look at this, is our total value divided by 100 times .529, 5, 52.9 cents. And that gets us to, at, at 100% collection, we would be at 216,962, $962,284. So about 217 million. When we look at our, under our reappraisal, our reassessed value becomes about 48 billion. When we look at our, under our reappraisal, our reassessed value becomes about 48 billion. Our historical annual tax base growth, so that growth factor is 3.57%. And so the calculation for the revenue-neutral tax rate, we basically do reverse algebra. So we take that revenue, that about 217 million, multiply by 100, we divide by the new value, 48 billion listed there, and then we multiply by 1 plus that growth factor, so 103.57%. That gets us to our revenue-neutral tax rate for FY22 of 46.8 cents. So that'd be 46.8 cents per $100 of assessed value.
Rusty, I do want to make the comment that, when we look at our historical growth rate, we take out any unnatural growth. So if you recall, we had a huge bump to our basement mission came online, so that growth would skew our actual growths. So we had to take that out. So I just want to make sure for the press and everybody understanding that that growth does not skew our numbers. We took that out.
Any questions on revenue-neutral calculation? All right. So we use the revenue-neutral calculation as kind of a starting point, and then we combine that with what's in the first pass budget, our financial outlook, and we looked for a sustainable tax rate. And when we say sustainable, we really mean a tax rate that ensures we have a structurally-balanced budget, that it covers our expected financial obligations over a period of time, and then it maintains our county policy-required 15% minimum fund balance over time. So we're not looking at this on a one-year window of trying to make sure over time this tax rate is sustainable. So our targets when we do this is we looked for, first, a single tax rate for a multi-year period, and then, second, that we would maintain a 15% fund balance or higher at FY2023 year end, so that two-year outlook. Through this analysis, we reached a first pass tax rate of 48.9 cents. That's 2.1 cents higher than our revenue-neutral tax rate. And so we'll walk through the valuation, the effects on homeowners, as well as the incremental revenue to the county, and then we'll look at that total budget of what that looks like at 48.9 cents. So when we look at our assessed value, as well as our property tax ad valorem revenue, in total, Buncombe County's assessed revenue, assessed property tax value, or, excuse me, property value increases to 48.0 billion in FY22. This is driven by the reappraisal of real estate, which shows an increase of 7.2 billion on real estate category listed there. Motor vehicle, as well as public service valuations, remain flat, while personal property falls by 200 million. When we look at how the value translates to revenue, we see that the, like I said, the first pass tax rate is 2.1 cents above revenue-neutral. The revenue generated as a result of the revenue-neutral tax rate is approximately $12 million higher than FY21, excuse me, yes, approximately $12 million higher than FY21's budget. And the revenue generated as a result of this first pass tax rate is approximately $10 million higher than the revenue-neutral tax rate. And I mentioned that, that $10 million, because I'll come back to that incremental revenue to talk through, what does that incremental $10 million above revenue-neutral pay for? So as I mentioned, we look at the effects on homeowners, as well as the county as a whole. The first thing we did is we asked our tax assessor the median home value in Buncombe County for FY21 versus FY22. In FY21, that median home value was $231,400. At a 52.9 cent tax rate, the median homeowner's annual property tax bill was $1,224. In FY22, the median home value increases to $291,000. At a 48.9 cent tax rate, the median homeowner's annual property tax bill will be $1,423. So as you can see there, listed in the growth column, that FY22 tax rate is 2.1, first pass tax rate is 2.1 cents above revenue-neutral, and that homes tax bill would see a $199 So we then look at first pass and revenue-neutral as, looking at the entire county as a whole. And so we see here listed, at the revenue-neutral tax rate of 46.8 cents on our $48 billion of value, with a 99.5% collection rate, the property tax revenue shown there is 223.6 million. So at revenue-neutral tax rate, property tax revenue would be 223.6 million. Under the first pass tax rate of 48.9 cents, again, the same value, 48 billion, the first pass revenue would be 233.7 million. It's an increase of $10 million. And so where we went with that, where we start to look, and we ask this question of, what does that $10 million pay for? So we can look by strategic focus area, as well as project or initiative, and focus on expansions or new expenses. First, we've talked about the 3% increase to K-12 education local current expense and AB Tech operating. That's $2.7 million, bringing the total investment in these partners to 92.2 million. As Jennifer mentioned earlier, a change in the first pass expenditure budget since our last work session was to increase that early childhood education funding stream to a total of $3.75 million. That's a 0.9 million dollar increase for FY22. The expenditure budget also includes that $300,000 amount we discussed earlier for Education Special Projects Fund. So you can see there, the first three lines, this brings us to $3.9 million increased investment in educated and capable community. Looking at environmental and energy stewardship, the budget now includes $750,000 for conservation easements, and alongside the 0.5 million dollar increase in funding, the budget includes a new position and a reclassification to manage the expanded easements. Resident well-being includes a $1.6 million general fund contribution to Mountain Mobility, which is a $0.3 million expansion. The annual transfer to Greenways increases by 0.3 million, and the FY22 cost to continue the Community Paramedicine Program with county funds is 0.2 million. Foundational includes a $1.5 million increase for capital and IT projects, which were nearly all postponed in FY21 due to the ongoing effects of the pandemic. The budget includes a $1.3 million expansion for new vehicles and capital equipment, such as our emergency medical services equipment. The budget includes $1.2 million for new positions, which is on top of the previously-mentioned conservation easement position and paramedic, paramedicine positions mentioned before. The budget also includes a $0.5 million expansion for deferred maintenance related to the facilities plan, as well as a $0.2 million expansion for IT needs, which were largely pushed off due to the FY21, in FY21 due to the pandemic. So this list accounts for $10 million in expansions, which highlights some of the need to potentially increase ad valorem revenue beyond the revenue-neutral amount. So that's, you know, what is that $10 million incremental property tax revenue paying for? So that's a lot. I'll pause here for questions. So now I want to transition and bring this back together. Like I said, we're building up to that full revenue budget. So when we look at our FY22 first pass revenue, in total, that ad valorem property tax revenue represents $234 million, or 67% of our general fund revenues. So this brings total revenues excluding appropriated fund balance to $350.6 million. This results in an appropriated fund balance of $9.0 million to balance the FY22 first pass budget. As we looked before, again, that comparison, so we've kind of walked through each element other than the property taxes there. In total, general fund revenues excluding appropriated fund balance increased by $18.5 million above the FY21 amended budget to $350.6 million. This is comprised of a $21.9 million increase in ad valorem tax revenue, again, which is $10 million above revenue-neutral. The appropriated fund balance falls by 6.1 million to 9.0 million there in, for FY22, bringing the total budget with appropriated fund balance to $359.6 million, which balances, obviously, with the first pass expenditure budget. So we've talked through the variance of each of the other individual categories, so I'll just pause here, see if there's any questions. So when we establish the budget, like I said, we've, you know, we review the expenditures, the revenues, the revenue-neutral tax rate, the sustainable tax rate, but a long-term financial outlook. You know, a budget's that first year, but making sure we're aware of where this is taking us as it sets our course. So we settled on a baseline scenario to help us look beyond just FY22. I want to walk through those assumptions before I show you that scenario, just to make sure you understand what's comprised, what's included in this financial outlook. So in this scenario, as I've mentioned, for revenue, we include a 48.9 cent property tax rate, that's 2.1 cents above revenue-neutral. We include a 3% annual growth in the property tax base, based on estimates from our tax assessor. We include $35.5 million sales tax revenue in FY22, which resumes our pre-COVID trajectory and trends. And then depending on the source, all other revenues, except for property tax and sales tax, depending on, increase by 1 to 3% annual growth, depending on the source and trends. For our expenditures, we assume a 3% annual growth in education. We assume a 2.5% annual growth in our operating expenditures, and a 3% annual growth in our personnel expenditures. And as we've mentioned, those changes since March 30th, we include those increased investments in our strategic plan priorities, starting in FY22. So then our target, as we look through this, is again, to have above 15.0 fund balance, which is required by county policy, at the end of FY23, so two years out. So when we look at our financial outlook, the total expenditure budget increases from a projected $334.1 million in FY21, so that's where Jen showed us with that projection, we increased to $359.6 million in FY22. The FY22 amount includes 341.1 for what we've classified there as foundational recurring, 5.2 for foundational one-time, and 13.3 million invested in initiatives that directly support the strategic plan priorities. And that's a 2.5 million dollar increase above FY21. The projections for FY23 through FY25 include the assumptions we just reviewed, and they show our expenditure budget would increase $8 million in FY23, $11.4 million in FY24, and $10.4 million in FY25 to $389.4 million there in the fourth year shown. When we fold in our revenues, the total revenue budget increases from a projected, our current projection of $337.6 million to a budgeted $350.6 million in FY22. And that FY22 amount includes $234.1 million in property tax revenue. And just, again, as a reminder, that's approximately $10 million above the revenue-neutral tax rate. All other revenues fall from a projected $120 million in FY21 to a budgeted $116.5 million in FY2. Again, this is largely driven by those one-time revenue sources that we received in the current fiscal year. So this results in the appropriation of fund balance, growing from this year's projected contribution of $3.5 million to FY22, an appropriation of $9.0 million. In the year shown, FY23 through FY25, property tax revenue is shown at that same first pass tax rate of 48.9 for all four years. Revenue excluding appropriated fund balances increases by $9.6 million in FY23, $9.7 million in FY24, and $9.2 million in FY25 to $379.1, the last revenue line shown there. And so the appropriation of fund balance, so again, for FY22 is currently $9.0 million. In FY23, it falls to 7.4, and FY24 increases to 9.1, and in FY25 is still at $10.2 million. So combined, our fund balance, the current FY21 projection shows that we would end this fiscal year with 22.7% fund balance. With the current plan and FY22 first pass budget, we would fall to 18.5% at the end of FY22. From there, fund balance, as a percent of the general fund expenditures, falls to 16.1% in FY23. So like I said, that's the target, that two-year window, making sure at a minimum we're above county policy. And then in the out-years of FY24 and 25, you can see, based on this current projection, we would fall below the required 15% to 13.2 in 24, and 10% in FY25. But again, this outlook is exactly that. It's a plan, it's a tool to highlight the short-term and the long-term effects of the FY22 budget, the FY22 tax rate, and just our ongoing priorities. So that's a lot on this slide. This is our last slide to review directly. I'll pause here for questions, and then I'll turn it back to Jennifer to facilitate any discussion.
Helpful, and obviously a lot to digest, but very helpful. My apologies if I missed this, I just want to make sure I'm tracking it well. As we think about this, where would the incoming stimulus funding show up for FY22?
For the local.
The 51 million.
Recovery. Right. So this actually would exist in a grants fund. So my assumption will be that, just as we were directed for the federal cares funding, that we would need to house that money in a dedicated special revenue fund. So that's where, so it would, yes, there would be interaction in terms of if there are items that are currently funded in the general fund budget, that meant that eligibility, that then there are decisions made, that we would then use that funding in lieu of general funding. But at the current time, it would not be depicted in the general fund outlook.
So we need to proceed with passing this budget sort of as if that funding does not exist?
Since we don't have any guidance.
Since we don't have the specifics, and then as we get the information, and the funding is released through a series of budget amendments, and we will basically make the adjustments that we can. But there is a scenario in which some of the general fund spending that we're seeing depicted here will actually be absorbed through that federal stimulus.
It could be.
There's a scenario.
Yes, there's a scenario. Our hope would be that that funding is one-time money for one-time expenses.
Right.
So mostly capital in nature and not really people.
Yeah.
Unless the people specifically to be time-limited.
Okay. Great. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was tracking that.
I have a follow-up question with that, too. Because when I look at the foundational one-time, that's a category I was thinking potentially for that funding, because there's a difference here, but last year 1.4 and now 5.2. So what are some of the things in that foundational one-time, and could some of those things potentially be good projects for this?
It could, especially some of the strategics as well. So yes, ma'am, some of those foundational one-times could be used for this fund.
And then also a follow-up, because I know we, broadband did not go on the strategic, and I know it was because of the discussion, and we're very hopeful that broadband is going to be one of the things that comes through this funding. But I do just want to put it out there, let's make sure that it's, you know, something happens, because I know that there's concern because of state statutes and how that's written, that currently something needs to change for us to be able to even use that broadband funding that's coming.
Correct.
So I don't want us to miss out on something that is extremely important to our community, because we're hopeful that we're going to get it, and that it's all going to work out.
That is on our radar, and we've got pretty good results so far from the NCAA C and some indications that this would allow us to use that federal money coming for broadband. That's why it doesn't show up in our budget. But also notice that we only have 9 million of fund balance as well. So if that is the case, we can come back to the board and ask for additional fund balance if broadband is something that we need to do. We're hoping to use fund balance again for one-time expenses, and that would be a one-time expense. So that would be our goal as we try to right-size our budget. We're looking at expenses to make sure we're not asking for more than we can do in a year, trying to keep our expenses low, but also not trying to have this large part of money and fund balance sitting around as well.
Carrie, are you saying you'd like to see broadband written into the budget in that way? Or just as we move forward in discussions that you want to make sure we talk about each time?
Well, I understand. I mean, it was in there, potentially in there, and I understand why they pulled it out, because then there's these other things, and we're very optimistic that we're getting the other. that we're getting the other. So I'm okay with that, as long as we are aware and we're addressing that, and not forgetting that piece, and how important that is. And so I'm satisfied with that answer. Thank you.
I mean, it is, it is an eligible use under the recovery funds. It's these North Carolina issues that need to be sussed out to make sure they don't interfere with it, right? Right, Commissioner, is there other questions?
Jennifer, the Affordable Housing Subcommittee the other day about the 500, potential 500K increases, that?
So it would have been prior to publication of these materials.
Of course.
So...
That was like 24 hours ago, so, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I definitely, you know, would want discussion and guidance from the Commission on that today, as well as any other items that you would like to provide us direction on as we move into our next iteration and phase of our budget development. Because our next opportunity to present will be the delivery of the County Manager's recommended budget. So any information that you all want to provide, that then changes the elements and the dollars, is definitely helpful. So the dollar amount that I heard as part of attending that committee was $500,000 as an increase to affordable housing. So is that, is that the direction you all would like to provide today, is to include that?
So, you know, the whole recovery thing, obviously, is just this big pool of resources and trying to figure out how to invest it, is this big, big decision. I think, I think what we specifically talked about was if we, if it is deemed that affordable housing is not an eligible use, right, then we would want to advocate for some increased funding, because it is a top priority. So how do we, how do we, you know, have some additional resources to, you know, to really increase our work in that area over the next several years, and like all these other things. But if the recovery funds are there, you know, they could very well, I mean, we may very well decide to, you know, program a meaningful amount of money from that. And therefore, you know, perhaps increasing the general fund allocation is not necessary to really increase our effectiveness over the next several years. So that's, I think we want to, so, I mean, hopefully, if we get good news in May, that affordable housing is an eligible use, the committee would not be requesting a general fund increase at this time. If it goes the other way, then we do want to at least have that in the mix of our discussions about the budget this year.
Yeah, right.
So late May, early June could be like a busy time in terms of thinking all this through, once we have the actual answers, right?
So prior, prior to you arriving today, one of the questions that I had posed, which could play into this a little bit, was around, you had asked a question around the possibility of holding public hearing and budget adoption on the same day, which was June 1st. So as we move towards, and if we don't receive guidance until, let's say, the end of May on some of those items, you definitely, you know, from a June 1st perspective around budget adoption, might not be...
I'm fine with adoption on June 1st, we'll just come back and amend the budget.
And we'll come back and amend the budget, so there you go. So you heard the county manager's preference. But it is statutorily, like, we're able to meet all of the dates and the timeframes according to statute, it's just that those, both of those meetings and actions need to be made public, so through the, you know, the publication process, as long as that's, you know, done.
Okay. So again, theoretically, everything just really, we get some good guidance, we've got some great plans, like, we could adopt at the first meeting in June.
Correct.
Typically, we adopt at the meeting on the third Tuesday in June, it's more traditional.
I think last, yes, last year we adopted the same meeting. We had one meeting last year, if I remember.
We did.
Yes. So we did the public hearing first, and then second, a agenda item, but the same night. If we don't get guidance from the federal government in time for that, we could come back and amend our budget as soon as we get guidance. To make sure that we add money for affordable housing.
Right, but we can't change the tax rate. Sure, when we amend the budget, we can't change the taxes.
That is correct.
Whenever we make that decision, we're kind of locking in, you know, the revenues that we have to work with.
So you have to take 500 from fund balance for that, for that year, if that's, if that's the case, you go, all we could do.
So that was actually, leads into my question, is looking at the 99.5% collection rate through the first pass, do we think with a nearly $200 increase on families, that that is a reasonable number? I mean, just through the reappraisal process, we've heard from so many folks who are concerned about the reappraisal and that impacting their property taxes, that, and we also know that people's jobs have been impacted over the last year. Do we, do we think that that's going to balance out in terms of that collection rate, or should we be really concerned about a $200 on average increase? I do need to get back with me on.
And that might be a Jennifer Pike question.
Might be.
Go ahead.
And I, and I will just clarify, it's not necessarily the average increase would be $199, that's the median home value.
Right, and so we know that it's going to be different per person, but it also appears that a lot of our families who's living in different houses, let me think about how I want to say this, those folks who are living in higher-valued houses did not seem to see the same rate of growth in their appraisal. So that does lead me to think that it is going to impact our folks who are living in different housing-type situations, in different income situations. Does that make sense? I didn't have an offline conversation with Jennifer, but to flesh it out a little bit better, but...
I'm really glad you're bringing this up. And think it's important for us to flag, just that, I think, I mean, I live in a neighborhood, for instance, where valuation has shot up pretty significantly, it's an East End neighborhood, historically African-American neighborhood, a lot of working families and folks on more limited incomes who are homeowners, for whom an increase of $200, which is, are the kind of valuations that we're seeing across that neighborhood, is, you know, that's a, that's no joke.
Exactly.
So I would, as we proceed with this, I'd love to be thinking about equity as we do so, and what tools are available to us, based on what, how we currently approach this process. And then also, in a forward-facing way, you know, as we're starting to look at three, four, or five-year projections, how we can make sure that equity is part of how we think about these conversations in the future. So I don't want to detract from your question about whether that's projected collection rate is accurate, but I also would really be excited to get an update on how participation in the appeals process is going, and if there's any demographic information available about the folks who are participating, and if there's any opportunities before the deadline that we might approach that appeals process through, around equity practices, kind of similar to how we think about, say, vaccines, right, where we know that having static locations at AB tech works great for some people, but for other folks, they need mobile locations. I think having an online appeals process works amazingly for some people, for folks with limited internet, or some challenges around that. Maybe we could think about some ways to make sure that appeals process is really as accessible as possible, especially to folks with more limited income, or for whom that process just might not feel very accessible. So I'm glad we're sort of planting a flag in this conversation.
Thank you. And yes, you took that down a little bit deeper than my bigger picture, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
But you know, as we think about that, too, let's not forget, when we think of early childhood, broadband, and all that we want to do for the community, to give, we got to give the services, too. And we need to make sure that we have a balancing act where we can do that. And sure, I'm concerned about, I want to make sure that we hold the property taxes down as low as we possibly can. But on the other hand, I want to make sure that all members of our community get the services that they need, to close the achievement gap with the medics, all of that. So that's a balancing act we've got to look for, and make sure, you know, that we take care of everybody, too.
I don't disagree, Commissioner Pike says, I think we have to do a really good job of communicating what services are going to be enhanced as a result of the property tax. So I put that challenge out to all of us as well as staff, to ensure that we're really communicating that to everyone across Buckham County.
Well, I think the staff did a good job, that they are pointing that out to us. And like you make a good point, we just need to make sure that we push it all the way down, you know, in our communication.
And one thing that would also help me, so when I also, you did a good job of breaking out some of the, you know, some of what could be that 10 million there. But also, I'm wondering, like, with the foundational reoccurring, that increase and the foundational one-time, it'd be good to also know, you know, kind of what are some of those big bucket items that are causing that increase?
We actually have a slide prepared, Jen, if you want me to go there in our appendix.
We anticipated that question.
Very good.
So it's important, it's an important question, to look through all of our expansion items. And it's actually, you know, we talked through, we highlighted that $10 million incremental, but there's really about $23.5 million in expansion items. So we've already talked through the first three there on educated and capable community, schools, early childhood education, education special projects fund. We talked through the two on environmental and energy stewardship, conservation easement, the staff associated with that, resident well-being. We talked through each of those three, the mountain mobility, greenways, community paramedicine program, vibrant economy, there's a net cost to our incentives, the increase there of $0.6 million incentives we've already agreed to. And then foundational, again, these are some of those things that you can't necessarily control, because they're things that are already in motion. First, there, 2.2 total, 2.2 million total in deferred IT needs, those are largely things, maintenance, replacement, and training that were pushed off this year because of the pandemic. The FY 2021 cost of living adjustment, the COLA of 1.45%, just went into effect as of April 1st, that's a projected $1.6 million cost increase next year, so that'd be foundational recurring. Capital and IT projects, we talked about that, that's the pay-go cash financing, as well as the debt issuance costs projected for new projects. The increase in new vehicles and capital equipment, we talked through that, so those are the foundational one-time, both of those categories. FY '22 new positions, we talked about, that'd be the foundational recurring. And the FY '21 new positions that we've approved in year and covered through lapse salary, those are about a $1.2 million cost next year in the foundational recurring category that becomes a full-year cost absorbed into the budget. The contribution we're required to make to the state retirement system increases by $1 million. Again, that's a foundational recurring, there's not particularly any choice there. Contingency, so we've talked about it in the past, that contingency is budgeted but never expended from there, so the budget has to include that $1 million contingency. The deferred maintenance, we talked about that related to the facilities plan, that would be a foundational one-time. And then just the reduced reliance on the appropriated fund balance, so appropriated fund balance falls by $6.1 million. So you see there, a total in terms of those expansion items of $23.5 million.
For foundational one-time, you said the capital and IT plus the increase in new vehicles?
Yeah, those are some of them, and I apologize, the way this is shown here is aligned to actual strategic focus area, and I'm trying to translate to the kind of expenditure classification that we use of foundational one, recurring, foundational one-time, and strategic plan priorities. Just using the same word in different contexts, I apologize.
I'm just trying to, I think that adds up to 3.1, I was trying to find the remaining, to guess to 5.2, which I think is the...
Yeah, so the, in terms of the 5.2, it is our general fund transfer to mountain mobility, so that $1.6 million. There's a $237,000 transfer to the tax reappraisal reserve fund, so you spread those expenditures over four years. It's the contingency would be included, the capital outlay, so our vehicles, our equipment, and any other capital outlay expenses.
Gotcha. Yeah, I guess one ask, I wish I had a more specific ask, but there's slides like this, and then slides like the what did, you know, what's included in the 10 million, is similar to a slide we received last time, that included the broadband. Broadband dropped off, and greenways got added to this, for example. And I guess by our next meeting, just for sanity's sake, to try to track, to track where we're headed with this process, I guess my ask or suggestion is some sort of spreadsheet where we could see all the expansion items, and what we've talked about through this whole process. Does that make sense?
As we prepare our materials for the May 18th recommended budget and budget message, a lot of that material will be included there. With that overall, what's included in the budget, what that looks like.
Thanks.
And maybe after Commissioner Slone, maybe we can review that, so that I understand a little more directly.
Yeah.
Because if it changed and dropped off, you probably wouldn't see it on May 18. This is more of a refining process?
Yeah, no, I guess a way to document what has fallen off, so I don't, so I can track it just mentally, you know? Like the, if there's stuff that's not...
So outside of departmental operating?
Right.
I can't think of any items that have fallen off out of expenditure since our first pass.
Broadband is not here, it's not even mentioned.
Well, and we wouldn't, we would not have included broadband in the total expenditures, but it may have been in a...
It was on the slide.
On a slide. Okay.
It was on the strategic priority slide, yeah. That's what I'm talking, that kind of category.
And nothing's changed around greenways either. But I, but we can certainly give you some more details around that.
Gotcha.
If nothing, we can take a quick break before we go to our next topic.
Okay, you want to take?
A five-minute stretch.
All right, sure. Let's do that. Five-minute break.
Five-minute break.
Models about how we may be able to offer some relief, especially to property owners for whom a $200 taxing piece would really be burdensome or unmanageable. We'd just be very interested to hear about strategies that might exist around that.
I'd love to see that. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to see that.
All right. What next? Are we going to talk about the facility studies?
Oh, the facility study.
Okay.
Better? Okay. Thank you all for having us back here today. My name is Rachel Nielsen. I'm with CPL and I have with me Ken Mayer, also a CPL. And we've been working with the team on the comprehensive facilities plan. We wanted to give you an update of where we stand on that. We have a lot more details than what we brought to you last time and we'll do, start with a quick overview of kind of what you may have seen already from our last presentation. I do want to note, if you've got questions along the way, jump in, ask those questions. We have a couple of points where we want to have some discussions and we'll kind of stop for some discussion points at that time. Also, before I get started, behind a few of you are some pinned up plans there and that's just a little bit more detail than what we may have in this presentation to dive into if that is what you want to do and you want to see that information. And then also behind me are some blocking diagrams of some of the buildings that we've been looking at, just a little bit more detail again, if that's something that you want to dive into there. Be louder. Okay. So our agenda will be the kind of background of the information that we had previously, review of those buildings' department assessments, space needs analysis, key drivers. And again, this is a lot of what you saw already, just a little bit more detail, and then really diving into that capital planning project timeline and some board opportunities. The priorities of this study were mainly to avoid leasing costs, look at the buildings that were, that the county was currently leasing and see what the best use of those dollars were to plan for and reduce maintenance costs. So there is some deferred maintenance within the county, but also looking at what could potentially be deferred maintenance in the future and making sure that there's a plan for taking care of that now before we get to that point. And then best use of space and customer service as a whole. And that mainly falls into the department analysis that we did. To give you a background, kind of dive back in, we looked at every single one of these buildings, 38 buildings across Buncombe County. We did 3D scans of these facilities, came up with a list of deficiencies, maintenance items. Some of those items are deferred maintenance. Some of them are things that we think might need to be replaced in 10 years. So looking both into the kind of the past and what this current state is and into the future. And gave each of the buildings an average rating based on those items. At the site level, we looked at those building sites. We looked at potential opportunities on each of the sites, zoning setbacks, height restrictions, and different constraints on each of those sites, as well as the needed maintenance items too. And from a space needs perspective, from a department perspective, we had a departmental survey. We did analysis, a deep dive into the telecommuting aspect that has come up during the pandemic. And we did two interviews with each department to talk about space needs, department needs, adjacencies, and growth projections. Diving into some of those assessments, we showed last time this slide that indicates these are the buildings within Buncombe County that have that average rating of three and a half or lower. And so just noting that there are a significant number of buildings that are many decades old within the county. I think, I was just talking to Mike, and I think it's about 800,000 square feet of buildings that were built before the 19, before 1950. And so coming up with a plan, a 15-year plan for upgrading those facilities as needed. So this takes into account, this slide here takes into account all of those maintenance items that we found within those buildings. We assigned a cost value to each of those items and put those in a priority one through priority four categorization to be able to assign an escalation cost. So this list here is heavy on roof replacements, HVAC unit replacements, finishes, updates, and includes all of the county buildings, including all of the libraries. It is for 15 years and does include escalation values. The years that we have noted on the top there, and I apologize if this is a little hard to read probably, that we have noted on the top there indicate the target year for that work to take place in order to take care of deferred maintenance costs or deferred maintenance and to not create deferred maintenance in the future as well. But knowing that a plan like this needs to be flexible and allow for things to be pushed out, for new priorities to come into place as well. And this maintenance list kind of assumes year zero as fiscal year 2023.
Question your HVAC unit point. Had me thinking about gas furnaces and didn't know if your analysis had that kind of data in terms of which buildings may or may not be heated with gas.
We have noted which buildings are heated in different ways, what types of units are in each building. What we have not done is gone through and done a analysis of which is the lower cost option for the future to whether, whether it's to stay with an electric system or go to a gas or there's a couple of steam boilers in the county still as well, so.
I'd love to see that data personally. And then is that analysis something you plan to do or just don't need to do at this time or?
That's typically something because a lot of these things are out so many years, it's hard to make those kinds of decisions on a facility now that you're not going to replace until five or 10 years from now. So that's something that's typically done at the time that that project comes up. A year ahead of that project maybe to look at a more in-depth analysis of at that time, how are things trending? Because some of the things now won't be the same decision you would make 15 years from now.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I did want to point out too, as we're moving into the next slides, that what we are trying to do with some of this is to use these maintenance costs in future decision-making in terms of which buildings need the most investment in terms of maintenance because potentially of age or different items. And how does that correlate to the, to the department needs of those buildings? Does it make sense for those departments to stay in there, given maybe some of the investments that need to be made into particular facilities? In blue, I've highlighted a lot of the facilities that, that came up a lot during these larger kind of discussions about the department analysis piece. And in yellow, I've indicated facilities that are leased facilities. But in the case of these leased facilities, the county is generally responsible for the maintenance on those facilities. I want to stop there and see if anyone had any questions on any of that information. And I can keep moving and then feel free to stop me if.
Only question I have, maybe you'll ask it as we go along. Are you going to tell us what facilities we need to move out of, get rid of?
We have some potential recommendations through this plan. And so as I mentioned, these are some of those blue buildings that I noted, which are facilities that we'll be kind of diving into a little bit further and that we've had discussions about in terms of larger changes to the departments that are in these facilities and how to best co-locate some of these departments as well. And so, for example, looking at the Allport building, that is 30 Valley Street and 44 Valley Street combined. That's about a 2.81 condition. There are some, to answer your question, there's some really significant, I mean, it's a much older building. There's a lot of code issues with that facility. And then there's some water infiltration issues and other things like that. And the maintenance costs over 15 years are projected to be about just under $7 million. So that's one of the buildings that requires the highest investment over, for maintenance over that time because of the condition of that facility now. Moving into the space needs analysis, we talked about this at our last meeting, that those key drivers in terms of the departments. If telecommuting continues, that creates space in particular at two different facilities, at 40 Cox and at Interchange, and that's the HHS department and the IT department. And if HHS were to relocate staff from 35 Woodfin to 40 Cox to infill the vacant spaces in those, in 40 Cox, then there's an opportunity to co-locate forward-facing departments such as planning, permitting, tax, air quality register of deeds into one facility to have kind of a one-stop shop for, for citizens. If General Services moves all divisions to that kind of old landfill location, so this Fleet Complex facility, if that's built for General Services, for Fleet and for Grounds, that opens up the General Services building at 40 McCormick to be able to have an emergency management facility within the downtown area that's bigger than the facility that they currently have at 35 Woodfin. I know that there's a new ambulance that'll be coming into play at some point too, so that gives some more flexibility for ambulance locations. And if HHS and Air Quality are currently located, co-located in 52 Cox, if those two move to the forward-facing building into the 40 Cox location, you've now opened up this property with a building on it that's in poor condition, which has the ability to construct a new elections facility at that site and to vacate the leased space at 77 McDowell.
Hi Commissioners, good afternoon. Raphael Baptista with Performance Management. So as was discussed in the last slide, a key driver to make this facility, comprehensive facility plan work is continuing some form of flexible work moving forward. So in that spirit, we spent a lot of time understanding how has flexible work been working for us for the last year and what has been experienced of other local governments across the country with flexible work who've been doing it for much longer. So we can ensure that if we do do this, there is not a negative impact on service delivery. So one of the first things we did is we developed a survey of our employees and our supervisors who were engaged with flexible work. And we had three primary objectives, right? Number one is, are folks interested in it, right? Number two, how often would they do flexible work? And number three, what are some of the things we need to keep in mind if we move forward with that in terms of making sure it's successful? So we identified the 575 employees who participated in some form in flexible work at any point in the last year. We sent them a survey. We had 82% response rate, representing 22 departments, and 22% of our respondents were supervisors, managers, or directors. So we're hearing both from frontline staff and from managers. So we had a really good perspective from across the organization. If you go to the next slide, please. So we asked them a couple of questions. And one, the key question is, how has flexible scheduling impacted you in your direct reports? So me as a supervisor, when I answered this question, I answered it from how has it impacted my productivity, but also that of my staff. We looked at productivity, teamwork, managerial workload, and the ability of supervisors and managers to evaluate employee work and provide coaching and support, right? Ensure work is getting done. And when you look at the graph across the board, we're not really seeing any issues, right? 80%, 84% in most of these categories saying no issues reported whatsoever. We do see in a couple of categories, people indicating slight or some issues, in a couple cases, moderate issues. But when we dug deeper into the survey, what we saw a lot of times is the employees who said, hey, I had some moderate issues. Then they had a narrative section saying, hey, when we first moved forward, I didn't know how to use Microsoft Teams. I didn't know how to do this. This was something new to me, but we got it, we solved. So across the board, both from employees and from supervisors, we're not seeing any impact on service delivery from flexible work. Even as we've started opening up and people are more involved and expecting more in-person service, we're still being able to deliver them that level of service. If you go to the next slide, please. So we did the survey about 12 months after instituting an emergency flexible work policy. So they've been through this for a while. They've been through the journey of it. We asked them, what's your general opinion? Are you supportive of this? And the answer is, they're really supportive. About 92% of employees who participated in some form of flexible work either loved it or liked it. If you look at the graph, less than 1% had a negative perception of flexible work. So this is something that's very supported by our workforce. But we know we've been doing this for 12 months. So we wanted to know, is this, is our experience a common experience? So staff identified dozens of local and state governments across the country, including ones who've been doing this for 30 years, and said, is this experience at Buncombe County your experience? Because you've been doing this for very long. You've done this during normal times. And the answer across the board is, yeah, this is our experience. Our service delivery is maintained at a high level. We have great employee engagement. So this really allows us to meet our strategic plan, community focus areas, but also a foundational goal around being an employer of choice in our western North Carolina region. So that's the information around flexible work. Happy to answer any questions you have. And like to thank Heather and Christina McEntee, who are on the Performance Management team, who did the survey and all this research.
And taking from that, that information, because that was really one of the drivers that we looked at at the beginning of this project, is how does that telecommuting piece affect all of the other potential dominos in this? We've put together a, what we're kind of calling a capital planning projects timeline. So we've identified through our assessments of the facilities, through the maintenance log as well, through the department surveys, what are maybe some of the, what are some of the projects that we would recommend considering and to look at and taking a deeper dive into to look at further throughout the county to kind of move the county forward and to kind of allocate the right resources in the right places. We've taken that list of, of projects and we've outlined them on a 15-year timeframe. And again, this is purely for, to be able to kind of look at the, because there are some domino effects here where some parts of this would need to happen before other parts. So to be able to see kind of the order in which some of these might happen. And then also, this also looks at the priority of some of those projects too, along there. And I've got this, it's posted up right behind you as well, if you want it. And I think you've got a copy of it to look at a little bit deeper. What I wanted to do is pull out four of these that are, what we're looking at is some of the more critical ones to be able to start the work moving forward, to be able to kind of those first linchpins in this set of dominos to look at. And I'll dive into that in a minute. I did want to bring this to your attention too. As we looked at all of these sites and all of these properties and these facilities, there are, in a few places in Buncombe County, there are these, these groupings of county-owned properties. And I think this is a really interesting one to look at. This is that north-south axis that you see there is Cox. And so when we talk about 40 Cox, 50 Cox, 52 Cox, that's where these are all located. So they're all really right kind of next to each other in that one area. So we did want to point that out as there's a lot of opportunities in this particular area since the county owns property and has some underutilized property in this area as well. And just looking at that from an aerial, you can kind of see that 40 Cox is the building that's, it's your HHS building that's finished construction now. But so going from left to right, we've got 40 Cox, which is HHS, and then we've got the Board of Elections warehouse. Behind that facility is an open parking lot. Adjacent to it, that long parcel there is an open parking lot with that small 52 Cox building. And then down at the end, on the far right, we have the tax building and that long skinny parcel. And across the street from that is a parking lot. Yes. At the end? Yep.
Next to the Skyrunner Internet Building. What is that?
Yeah, that's a, there is a monitoring well there at some point on that property. I don't know if you know that particular, is that what that shows? Yes.
It's a what building? Okay. Curious. Okay, thank you.
Yep. And so as I mentioned, we wanted to pull from that timeline, a couple of those ones right in that zero to two-year timeframe. One, the first one being that 40 Cox piece that we talked about that would be triggered by a telecommuting policy. We've, we've talked to a lot of the staff with HHS and what we understand from all of our discussions is that the space is there, the space is available. But because of the ratios of team members in managerial positions, that there is a need for additional office spaces there in order to best accommodate those, those team members. So that's kind of the, the kind of starting point to be able to move some of the team from the 52 Cox location and from the 35 Woodfin location to combine all of those HHS groups within that one facility. At the Fleet and General Services complex, we know that the Phase 1 of that project hasn't funded, but what the number you're seeing up there is for the Phase 1 and 2 combined. That's the estimated cost for that. And what that would do is that would open up the grounds building, and we've identified this in the timeline, the grounds building for a potential recreation services location, the Fleet building for solid waste use, and the General Services building for emergency services. The third item down on that list is a new elections facility at 52 Cox. And with the, the Items 1 up there, we would relocate those groups out of that 52 Cox building and demolish that building and build a new facility for elections to move them out of the leased facility at 77 McDowell.
On your chart here, you have a Phase 1 and Phase 2 for that, I believe?
We do, yes. So the Phase 1 is the, the move from 77 McDowell. Phase 2 that's shown on that timeline is to take the facility next door, which is more of a warehouse-type space, and bring that into the same property and leave that, where that, that property, where the warehouse is, have that available for any board projects. So the warehouse facility is in good condition, but the, it is in a very nice property location for other kinds of things, so.
So you're saying there's room on that 52 Cox property with that giant parking lot to build a new building and move a warehouse to and still have parking, is what I'm hearing you say?
Could you get back to the picture of the overhead? Which, which parcel is 52 Cox?
The long one in the middle. Yes.
With air quality on it?
Yes. And.
Okay, so this is where elections would go?
Yes.
Would elections go in that building or does the building go away or is there a new building?
Yep.
Air quality building goes away and a new elections building is in its place. This one? This is the warehouse you're referring to? Okay, and on 52 Cox, elections would go there. And what else, what else would go there on that parcel?
Just elections.
That warehouse would also leave and go on that site as well.
This would go away and something else would happen there unrelated to elections?
Yes.
This whole parcel would be used just for elections?
I believe so. The elections building, facility, administration building, and their warehouse and storage for all of their polling equipment and everything would go there.
You're saying they'd move the warehouse there as well? I think is what they're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How big would that building be? Like a one-story, two-story or how big? How big would the building be? Like, how many levels would it be?
I would assume two. Their current facility right now is about 7,500 square feet at 77 McDowell. So we would bring in at least 7,500 square feet into that 52 Cox parcel.
Plus storage.
Plus storage. And that storage facility, that warehouse facility you see there is about 15,000, 10,000 to 15,000.
So the new, the new elections building would be about half the space of that building here.
The little building that's right there now is 3,000 square feet. It's a two-story. It's 1, 1,500 on each floor for scale. And the, the other reason that we did break that into two phases is we can have a discussion too on whether that Phase 2 happens here or happens elsewhere as well.
So is the reason you're wanting to use that specific location is because there's also good parking with that? I guess partly when I was looking at it, where the, where the other facility is the storage, I guess one question is, why not utilize that space for all the election? Because it's a smaller space unless you're wanting all the parking.
If we were to use the warehouse facility in order to build a new building, we'd have to tear that down. So there's a little bit of, there would be some, definitely some flex space needed to, for them to be in during construction of that.
And there was, there was just investment made in that building not long ago too.
Yeah.
And the warehouse building?
And the warehouse building.
What kind of investment?
It was done before I got here, but it was actually a large renovation so they could use it for storage. I think it was a gym before.
Or the conversion investment, yeah, yeah.
So one thought is to use that investment for a number of years before, that's one of the reasons it's a Phase 2, potentially.
So if elections goes here and that's a 15,000 square, I'm sorry, you said, or 7,500 square?
7,500 to 10,000, yeah.
It would still just be a big parking lot there too.
That could be repurposed. It would need some parking though for voters and when they have the election night results and stuff like that, but not as much as you have there.
So we're, you know, talking about the budget stuff and obviously this always has budget implications. So in terms of thinking about kind of moving different pieces forward, just could, could y'all talk a little bit about the process? just could y'all talk a little bit about the process? I mean, some of it's funding to do different things. But we're not just going to approve all of these plans through approval of the budget, right? So how does the process work?
If we get approval to move forward, you can talk about capital, capital projects would come forward at different times. The next slide you had talked about some key drivers that you can look at, which would be the first would be the 40 Cox renovation. That was 1,500 dollars. So if you're looking at 40 Cox renovation, that's your first one that we'll have to do. The second one there, we currently have about 4 million, I believe, budgeted for a fleet complex. If you considered moving fleet and general services, that would be the second capital project. That would be, I believe Donna is here as well, be a debt service. We would look to finance a building. So that would be debt service for that one. So those would be the four, two pieces that you would have to start right away.
Could we get back one slide again? So 40 Cox.
That one, yes, the big one, the big with the red thing on top?
With the existing building, the older building is 40 Cox. The newer building is also 40 Cox.
Yes.
So when you talk about spending 1.5 million, is that for the older building, doing things to address it? Or is it also investing in changes to the new building?
It's primarily changes to the new building in order to build some additional offices. So conversion of cubicle space to offices. And we're looking at, I, it's addition of about 10 offices on six floors of the.
10 additional offices on six floors?
10 additional offices per floor on six floors.
So it's just sort of internal space reconfiguration to get more humans working there so we free up space in other facilities?
That's because so many of them will be telecommuting potentially.
Yep.
Because so many of them will be talking to?
Potentially telecommuting.
Okay, gotcha.
So we're backfilling space.
Empty space, yeah.
So, you know, we've talked about this before and the, I mean, I like a lot of, a lot of this. My biggest concern would be just that that whole, that whole complex is just, it's such, you know, it's the urban core of, you know, the biggest city in the western part of the state. And I guess I'm just concerned about kind of underdeveloping it is my biggest concern. Just doing a one or two-story building on really any of those parcels at this point seems like it could be potentially really underdeveloping it. So I'm for doing stuff here, but I just kind of wonder if we might, if we might want to just think about, you know, maybe the first two stories of a building is elections. But then there's, what about the potential air above it that could be something too? That's my main kind of high-level question.
Yeah. I'm excited about that.
I would co-sign on that and, you know, I mean, specifically thinking about affordable housing opportunities, early childhood education, the kind of, you know, grocery store options, you know, just the ways we can really be thinking, I think, in a forward-facing way and way that's really responsive to some of the needs we know are most critical. So I'd be, I want to hold and recognize that all these have been identified as priorities for a reason. And so this doesn't mean not doing these, but just, I would be excited to sort of break open some of the thinking on this in here, like where else might we do some of these things? Or how might we co-locate some of these essential services with some of the other things that we are talking about vis-à-vis your strategic plan?
Yeah, my planner brain just looks at this and it's just a tragically absurd amount of parking that no one, yeah, that we all pay for in other ways. And so, yeah, underdeveloping that 52 Cox parcel would be my biggest concern. So like even moving the new building back towards Ravenscroft is one idea in my head to free up that frontage closer to Cox Avenue across the alley from the warehouse, you can kind of develop both of those areas.
And we haven't retained them to do that level of work yet.
Right.
So if you're saying that we can go to the next level, one thought that we will love to see is a conversation around packed library. So that could be added in and a mix here. When you talk about several stories, yes, the ground floor could be a library, the top floor could be elections. There's so many possibilities.
Yeah.
But we haven't really dug into that. We were trying to solve our problem that we do have vacant space, old buildings that need maintenance and renovations. So if you give us the go-ahead to engage them more to start doing some of that deeper dive, we can go there and come back with, we know affordable housing, we know childcare, we know lower barrier shelters, there's so many other things that's on the table that we need to talk about and we do have some land. So if you tell us to go start that conversation, I know you're willing to work, so.
Let's move the warehouse out to the airport or something is one, another thought, I'll leave.
The warehouse for the elections?
Yeah, yeah.
Can we just ask that question? Like how, I mean, I'm sure it's very desirable to have it all in one place, but like how essential is it to have, like from the election standpoint, to have the storage space literally on-site with the office space?
Well, they're not now. They are in two separate locations now. They're on, I think, I'll have to dive back into my notes completely to give you the kind of full answer on this. But the short answer is that on a day-to-day basis, not very important. It's on those election night times where they do have people coming and picking up and dropping off from both locations, from the warehouse and from their other facility. So there is a certain amount of traffic and pickup and drop-off that happens just because of how they're, just because of the quantity of equipment and how it's spread out. I think it's much more important from their perspective to have the facility that's at 77 McDowell in a more downtown location. Because that's where they're registering voters, that's where people are coming, that's where the board meets, that's where all of that kind of stuff happens. So less impactful on the warehouse portion of it than the other part.
And I know you said this, but I just want to just make a note here. So the elections offices itself, they need about, how many square feet?
They currently have 7,500, probably looking at more like 10,000, I would say.
And then how much storage space do they need?
I think it's 15,000. That's definitely on there, but I can go with that.
All right.
Called BOE on that building list.
And again, that existing building is 50,000 square feet, just as kind of a reference point, okay.
They do still have things stored in Allport, yes. Yeah, so there's a little bit.
And then 91 Cox, the parking lot in the bottom right?
Yes.
Do our employees use that or is that pay-for-feet? Okay.
That's public, yeah, public parking for tax.
I feel like I've paid to park there before, I maybe?
I tried to park there once and I had the county tag on there and they would not let me park there.
Okay.
You gotta go, we know who you are, get out of here. So I don't know what happened.
But daytime hours is for visitors to the tax department.
It was not available to commissioners, I'll tell you that.
So that is 10,000, about 10,000. Yep, that's correct. And, yeah, like you mentioned, there is some storage on one floor of Allport right now that elections is using. And that's purely because there isn't space elsewhere for them to.
Two Sawyer is parking for who?
Yeah, that's the, in the back.
That is storage for HHS and we have some shipping containers over there.
Okay, so some underutilized space?
Yep.
If we can get some guidance on the, if you go back again, there's a couple of the things that we would like to move forward on. Especially around the 40 Cox and moving, really utilizing that space. We spent lots of money on that building and it's not as full.
So let's just kind of go through this, so the 40 Cox renovation concept, any high-level concerns about that piece?
I think the public's going to have questions about it, but maybe, but I totally get it and understand and I'm on board.
The question's being, why are we spending all this money on a building that we just built?
That we just built, yeah, yeah.
That's a fair question, but I mean, I think the answers are, we actually trying to get a lot, you know, it's working fine. We're trying to get even more out of it. And it's going to bring up other county real estate.
You sold me.
Yeah.
It's not, and we would sit down and think through that because we do have some funds. The last set of money that built 40 Cox, some of it was state money. So we would want to look to that source as well for this. So if you would tell us to move forward, we will start looking at those options as well.
Next is the Fleet General Services complex. And this is the idea of moving Fleet from where it's currently near the transport station.
Yes, that one.
Out to the old, next to where the solar farm's going to definitely happen.
Yes.
At the old landfill site. And this is on the part of the property that's never been landfill. So there'll be a new building out there that's going to cost 8.3 million dollars.
No, sir. That's the Fleet building, you already have that funded in your budget at a little over 4 million, I believe, to add General Services and Grounds. That's the additional.
So?
8.3 addition or from 4 to 8?
From 4 to 8. Not for the Phase Two at this point, but that would be a debt service. We would have to borrow the money to do that.
So there's already 4 million in that capital improvement debt we got?
Correct.
Okay, cool.
Okay. So it sounds like there's, you know, not a lot of concerns about moving those pieces ahead for whatever additional approvals need to come to us. Now the new elections facility, 52 Cox.
As that one more, there was a lot of discussion around the utilization of space.
Can we go back to the picture one more time? It's great to have this terrific photograph as we're.
Yeah.
Okay, wait, so, but I'm still not clear. Like if we move elections out of the existing building, where does it go when it leaves?
I'll start that and Civil, if you want to jump in on this one. So right now, we would move them into that warehouse.
The staff?
The staff.
Okay, right.
In the interim, to get them out of 77 McDowell, can I say that? Okay.
Okay, so they'll move the gymnastics building?
Yes, yes. That would be the interim solution. We would want to, we would want to do a study around the bigger lot for a permanent building for elections, a permanent campus. So as we're thinking that, if we're going to go up and have a mixed-use, public-private partnership conversation, we can look into that, but today, we would move them into the gymnasium.
And that would be their offices and they have some storage space. So it's not ideal, but in the interim, it could be an interim solution.
Correct.
And I'll also note that, that one impact of the telecommuting policy, we talked at the beginning about two buildings. We talked about that impacting 40 Cox significantly. It also impacts the IT building at Interchange. So that leaves the Interchange facility as an option for flex space as some of these other things happen around the county, which you're definitely going to need through all of this as well.
And then so, so elections is here, now air quality is envisioned as moving out of that building and that building eventually goes away. But does that happen right away or is air quality going to stay there for a little bit longer while all this is being planned or are they moving out in the short term?
They're going to stay there a little bit longer. But eventually, once we get people moved out of 35 Woodfinn into 40 Cox, air quality would move their 35 Woodfinn.
Which is the fourth piece of the next slide.
Yes.
Okay, let's look at that.
35 Woodfinn is not on that slide.
It is a little bit, so what we were, because we were talking about these being priorities for this upcoming fiscal year 2022. Because that first domino is the 40 Cox, the 35 Woodfinn stuff is not going to happen in the next year just because of the timing of all of that. But we were recommending that you potentially look at the planning process for that starting and the construction funding for that would not happen until a future year.
Okay.
Avril is now at a helpful time to talk about Family Justice Center?
Sure.
Piece of it and the challenges you've been?
Yeah, and we actually had a meeting with them yesterday, the leadership at the Family Justice Center, because we want to make sure that they're, I'm using the word partitioned, so they have some security. So we did meet with them and they're open to the concept. We don't want, they don't really want to move, they have the brand, they like the facility. So we would need to make sure we build, there will be some renovations needed to keep them cordoned off from the general public coming in so the victims are still secure and safe. So that will be something that they would work through even more. We do have some block diagrams that you can see or initial thoughts around that, but they're open to the concept at this point in time.
When does Emergent Services move in the midst of all of this?
They could not move until we free up 40 McCormick, which is where General Services is currently.
Okay, I'm just thinking about the location of that and parking at McCormick and timing of all of that because that gets really congested in the spring and summer. So just thinking that, sorry.
And in terms of elections moving over, since there is an interim solution, there is a way, if things come together to make that move happen, that could happen. Are there any concerns about that as an interim solution? And then we kind of have the space to kind of think about these parking lot properties and, you know, is it a fairly, you know, small new building or maybe a much bigger mixed-use kind of, kind of space? So, but we would then need, you would need some resources to kind of get some, get some.
Yes.
Focus to look at that concept and see, you know, what's?
And start thinking about, I don't think we've done a public-private partnership at this point in time, but that's a possibility that we could do there. Where we would, almost like a condo building, we'll own the first couple of floors and then a public person can own the rest and rent it or do whatever they want on floors. But those are possibilities for that space. It is a great location.
Okay. Any other questions from commissioners or any other questions you need feedback on at this, at this point?
I don't think so. I did want to just, so you have this in the back of your mind. On the timeline, you might have noticed that it has a couple of other properties noted as, I believe we say, property becomes available. And that's just a, one of those properties is the Allport property. It's the one that we identified as being high maintenance costs over the next 15 years because of, because of the age of the facility, because of a lot of concerns with accessibility and codes, that that property, when we move, when we would move these four-facing groups into 35 Woodfinn, that property becomes vacant. And there is, and then the 52 Cox on there as well. I think there was another one I had noted as property becomes vacant too, just to keep it in mind. Yeah, 94 Cox.
Go back to that slide then? So, no, no, no.
You want the timeline? Oh, the map.
That one, not that one, the other one. So 94 Cox, which is a long rectangle on the bottom, the tax building?
Yes.
So that long rectangle on the very bottom of the screen there would become vacant at the end of all the moves.
Because tax would get at 35 Woodfinn.
The tax would be at 35 Woodfinn as well.
Okay, so another potential development.
Correct.
Including that parking lot that won't let any of us.
Correct. That, that long one is the tax office. I believe we have a contractor that runs that facility, Brownie, so that's possible.
They're very vigilant. They're watching it closely.
It's a really cool building, at least from the outside.
Oh, if you come after five, the charge.
So to tie this together in a bow and my? So to, to tie this together in a bow in my head, I guess tell me, well, Avril, you, you, we were talking about thirty-five Woodfinn and the vacancy levels there now. At the end of this, where would we be in terms of?
It will be full because we'll move the people from other buildings and fill those up. And these, these facilities here would actually be vacant. So the tax office, that long rectangle will be empty, the Allport building, where is where your planning inspections folks are.
That will be empty, okay. And then forty, forty Cox?
That will be full because of.
Okay, cool.
And so you'll kind of see a little bit on the map that's pinned up on the wall over there. Those are the two groupings of properties within kind of the downtown limits. So you see that, that one grouping to the left, bottom, bottom left, that's the sites that we're talking about. The other grouping to kind of the top right, that's your thirty-five Woodfinn, that's this building, that is Valley Street Properties and a few other ones, so.
Valley Street and Allport are the same.
Yeah.
Got you. Okay, great, great discussion. What's, what else do we need to cover next?
I think that was the end of the agenda. Well, next steps. So Avril mentioned briefly PACT Library and what we will come back to you at on the eighteenth is a little bit more information on what we talked about today, but we really want to dive into the library piece of things at that meeting and the library recommendations that have come out of those discussions and all of the analysis that we've done on the library side of things. And then our current plan is to have, in the middle of June, to present this kind of final study here, pending any other things that we need to get together as we discuss today.
All right, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, commissioners, are there any other questions? Before we adjourn? Did we, we're adjourned?